Please not only bless us here at the county to be good in all that we do and making and doing what we can for the people here, but also please bless our nation and state and help them to do what is right, not only for our nation, but for the people of this nation. Amen.
Commissioner Langley.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner Northrup.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Grace.
Here.
Commissioner Barrera.
Here.
Commissioner Marquetti.
And Commissioner Lee.
Here.
All right, welcome, everybody. Before I open the floor for public comment, just to remind everybody, you have three minutes, and this will be for agenda items only. There's minimal to no feedback for this, but if you do have something for your specific township or area, come to that respective commissioner, or you can come to me at the end of the meeting. And if it's something really, really pressing, you know, we'll figure that out in time. So, floor is now open for public comment. All right, floor is now closed for public comment. We have any additions or deletions to the agenda? I do. We need to add under new business, and that would be probably number three, right?
Yes.
Under number three, we have a have an ad hoc committee. We have to add and vote on my decision on who's going to be on the ad hoc committee because we had one person drop. And I'd like to add, under presentations, the medical examiner and forensic services team that are here under presentations. Does anybody else have any additions or deletions to the agenda? All right, here or none? Commissioner Langley.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the agenda as amended.
Second, have motion on the floor in support. Any other discussion? Here or none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. You're back up, Commissioner Langley? Nope. Recognitions? There are none. I couldn't read my own handwriting here. Trying to give you double duty. So, without further ado, sirs, you all have the floor. And once you get up there, there's a button, little man with a thing on the on his mouth. There you go.
Sure is.
There it is.
Very good. Am I projecting? Excellent. Very good. Okay, so, thank you, everybody, for adding us to your agenda for this evening. I'm Dr. Patrick Hansma. I'm a forensic pathologist and the chief medical examiner at Western Michigan University Homer Stryker M.D. School of Medicine, the longest name in history. And so, I won't consume much of your time. We are an add-on here. So, you have before you a printed copy of our annual report. It has all the counties we serve, and you will find Cass County begins on page 26. And I'll just walk you through this data here real quickly. As you can see on page 26, the summary of all Cass County cases, 2023 is that right-hand column going down there. Basically, the theme in all of our counties and pretty much everywhere throughout all of this is kind of a return to pre-COVID numbers. Everything's kind of just settling back down, really, is what it is. And honestly, that's like the whole annual report. Everything after that is just details. But I will walk you through it. So, you can see that the total deaths are trending downward. The total number of deaths that were reported to the medical examiner's office, 157 in 2023, so that's stable from the year before, but whatever. Essentially, the trend is downward. What is on the rise, however, is that bottom chart on page 26, cremation permit authorizations. Cremation has become the dominant preferred form of disposition for mortal remains. More and more people are getting cremated, and for someone to be cremated, the medical examiner actually receives a copy of that death certificate to review, and if needed, launches an investigation into that death because upon cremation, that body is destroyed. And so, if there was a non-natural death that was missed, maybe a death in hospital, and they didn't realize that there was an injury that led to the chain of events where they died months later, you know, we try and pick that up. And so, that is consuming increasingly more and more of our time, authorizing cremations. But moving on to page 27, manners of death reported. Most people die natural deaths. This is no different in Cass County, so you see the right-hand column, 2023 there, 114 natural deaths, and then accidents following, and then suicides just made it into double digits with 10, and fortunately, only one homicide. Deaths reported by age right below that. Now, 2023 numbers are going across that bottom row instead of down the right-hand column. There was a slight uptick in pediatric fatalities, unfortunately, but we're still down in single digits. So, that's really, you can't make any statistical conclusions from that. It's just one or two deaths bumps the number. But most deaths are the elderly, and again, in the West, the population is aging. And so, more and more, we are dealing with deaths amongst the elderly as opposed to maybe that younger middle-aged bracket that it once was decades ago. Pediatric fatalities of the two that we certified, we also performed autopsies on, these usually, in most counties and most situations, were dealing with potential unsafe sleep situations. In this case, we did have one drowning, and then there was a blunt force injury due to involvement with a motor vehicle. And then on page 28, accidental deaths by mechanism, the most recent data down that right column, 2023. Motor vehicles and drugs by far are the most common causes of accidental deaths in all of our counties and pretty much everywhere. Drownings are not uncommon, of course, so there was one in any state that has a lot of bodies of water. And then you'll see falls. There were three falls. Just to clarify, these are not falls from heights. These are most often ground-level falls. Grandma falls and fractures her hip, and she never recovers. And so, that's a fall-related fatality, but it's a ground-level fall. And then, let's see, drug-related deaths, as I mentioned, those account for about 50% of the accidental deaths, and you see them at the table bottom of 28. There were nine accidental, one suicidal, and no indeterminate. Sometimes we're not sure, did somebody, you know, just turn to their preferred recreational drug, or did they decide, no, I'm going to end it all, and I'm going to end it with my preferred recreational drug? So, those are sometimes indeterminate deaths, but most of the time, they're certified as accident, and you'll notice that 89%, so approximately 90% of cases involve opioids. And then, that gets us to the last page for Cass County data, which is suicides by sex and age. Again, so this is on page 29 at the top of the page, and it's that bottom row going across that top chart, the 2023 data. There were 10 suicides, 80% of them were males, and that's broken down a little bit further in the bottom chart on that page. Firearms tend to be the preferred method. Hangings, drugs, and motor vehicles always account for a subset of these as well. So, honestly, Cass County's numbers basically just look like the rest of the state is really what it is. There's nothing that jumps out, nothing exceptional. The death rate is, you know, just at a glance of these numbers, tolerably low. Essentially, Cass County looks like a pretty safe place to live and raise children. So, there's that.
Thanks for that plug.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, that's the data. The other thing that I really just wanted to mention was I've been your medical examiner now for one year after my predecessor, Dr. Joyce DeYoung, resigned from our institution to become the dean at another medical school, and my hope has been that it has been a seamless, smooth transition, and that you have noticed nothing, and that everything is just excellence. And if you ever have any concerns, or if there's any information you need about mortality statistics in this county, please reach out to us. We've got a website with a million ways to contact us. We've got somebody available 24/7. So, if you ever need us for anything, please reach out. And do you have any questions?
Any questions for the medical examiner?
Thank you.
Well, thank you, sir. Great job. Great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Have a pleasant evening.
Yes, sir. You too. All right, if I could, and my apologies to the board, under recognitions, we do have a personal recognition here from a county, for a county employee. So, if nobody has any objections, I would like to speak on a very important issue. In our audience is a officer or deputy that just retired, Dave Nevins. And for those of you that don't know, I was a reserve officer for about 15 years, and I was prisoner transport, and a good percentage of that 15 years, I rode with Dave. And I was in the military for 25 years, you know, and even Army guys need heroes. And Dave is an extraordinary man. I'm glad he's got his kids with him because your dad is cool. When people dial 911 and your dad shows up, everything's going to be all right, you know? So, if I could have Dave come up, I got something to give him, and if we could do it by the flag, I'd like to present you with a coin from the county and get a picture of us. All right. Item number, letter J, propose consent agenda, Vice Chair Lawrence.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we present these from M-15 to M-25, that we, I propose that we do a one-time motion to pass all these.
Second, motion on the floor in support. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Langley.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Northrup.
Yes.
Chair Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Grace.
Yes.
Commissioner Barrera.
Yes.
Commissioner Marquetti.
Yes.
And Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
All right. Item K, Commissioner reports. District One, Commissioner Langley.
Well, don't have a lot to report right now except that our supervisor for Silver Creek Township is resigning or has resigned, so they're going to be looking for a new supervisor here in the near future.
All right, thank you. District Two, Commissioner Lawrence.
Went to the ambulance meeting this past week, and there was, I think, a good report here that came out that we could be signing some contracts here probably within the next couple of months for ambulance service in Duwajak and Cassopolis. So, I think it's a good move.
District Three, Commissioner Northrup.
I have nothing to report at this time.
All right. District Four, Commissioner Jones, that's me. One thing I have to report is I represent Polkagan and Howard Townships, and right now, Howard Township is in the spotlight, you know, in the big spotlight. And for the public and for the commissioners, I just want to say that commissioners have roles, and our main responsibility is the taxpayers' dollars. That is our primary, our primary duty. Our secondary duty are the boards and committees that we're on, right? One of the things that we cannot do, and that is spelled out in the Michiana Association of Counties and state law, one thing that we cannot do, we cannot interfere in township, village, or city government. There's nothing we can do, you know, as much as we would like, but what we can do is we can, we can listen to our constituents because absolutely, you know, a lot of times, people want to be heard. But as far as is me telling a township supervisor or anybody here or a city manager, you will do this because of county said, they can tell us to leave their office. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I got, I get contacted every now and then on the road commission, thinking that we have something to do with that. I wish there was something we could put out there that we have nothing to do with this road commission, except for appointing the road commissioners.
Appointing the board. Yes, sir. So, there's a pamphlet that I, that I used to carry with me, and I gave it out to a few people in August after the primary. I'm going to try to get a copy of that and maybe put it on our website, and maybe get a couple more of those pamphlets and sit it here for people to know what our job is because I think that's the biggest piece is education on what we actually do as far as government. Education is key, you know, for all of us. I'm still learning. This is my third term, and my third term is chair, but we're all still learning, but I think the public needs to know what we do and what our responsibilities are and what our lanes are, if anybody remembers that. Anybody else got anything on that before I pass it to District Five?
Nothing to report, sir.
All right. District Six.
Nothing to report.
District Seven.
I have a report. In District Seven, I attended the Edwardburg Food Pantry Meeting on January 27th, and also I met with Richard Conway of the Van Buren Cast Board of Health on January 24th. This is regarding preparations for an upcoming chili cook-off that was going to be taking place in my district. And then this week, the committee met on the Fall Festival, which will be September 20th at the fire department. And for the county, I attended the Materials Management Planning Committee meeting on January 14th. There were three presentations on how or what the county does for recycling. Berrien presented, Van Buren presented, I presented. I explained our twice-a-year program for used tires, hazardous waste, and used electronics, and I was able to reveal this year's dates, which are April 23rd and September 24th at the Cass County Road Commission from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. The Cass County Planning Commission met on January 23rd, and we began a review of the draft master plan. We will finish up at our next meeting on February 26th. Then the draft copy will be sent out as prescribed by the Planning Enabling Act. Also, the Board of Public Works meets next Wednesday on February 12th, and we will get the resolution from Porter Township in Van Buren County on the sewer project for Bangston Lake. We will be asked to pass a resolution likely at the March meeting. And if you have any questions about this, please ask me because we have done this a number of times before, and this is kind of a big deal for this board. And lastly, I had an email from Marty Hardy on, from the Council on Aging, and they have openings on their board for members of the public. They have two openings, possibly three openings. They meet the third Tuesday of the month at 8:30 a.m., and there's a small stipend that you could probably pay for your gas. If you want the application, it is on the Council on Aging's website. So, that's it for me.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to go back to Commissioner Langley with District One.
Thank you. I would also like to mention for Wayne Township, Mike Malley, who's a trustee for the township, had passed away, I think, about a week and a half ago.
Hmm.
I think he had a short illness for about a month.
You let us know if they have any, if, like, if the board can send some, as a board, maybe send some flowers or maybe even attend any, you know, the services or anything?
Okay.
That'd be awesome for us to pay our respects.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Lee, District Eight.
Nothing at this time.
All right. Administrator Renfro.
I did provide a report in the packet, just a few things that I wanted to touch base on. It talked about the audit remaining ongoing right now. I just want to let you know, as of this afternoon, we're about 86% complete, so making very good progress. That is due on March 31st, so I am comfortable with where we're at right now, and so feeling a little bit better about that compared to when I wrote this about a week ago. We do have a few candidates for our GIS director position that's open right now. I'm hoping to get some interviews scheduled in the next week or so and really get that settled and a new director in place. Very excited for that. And just one other thing, I want to make sure that everybody is aware that all 1099s and W-2s were sent out. There was some concern with me being out sick. A huge thank you to the staff that was here. I was printing from the house, and they were lining up papers in those forms for me and getting those mailed out. So, huge thanks to the administration team. So, the rest of the report's in the packet if you have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for our administrator? All right, county partners, Ms. Weesaw. Come on up closer to the mic, please.
Yes.
There you go.
Okay, so I just wanted to touch base on how we did on our Eagle audit. We actually did really, really good. All the paperwork and files were in order. We had a few job sites that needed some, some addressing, but other than that, we did good. Ann Gilchrist from Eagle is also going to use some of our forms that we have come up with to introduce to other counties because she likes how we are kind of making everything flow better, I feel like. And we're also working on enforcement for the county because right now, we don't have any, really, other than our violation letters that we produce. We have been talking to some other counties, and they use, they actually have, their inspectors have ticket books. So, we are looking into seeing how we can work on better enforcement. We are hiring a new inspector. Our inspector is no longer with us. We have 30 applicants for that position. We've interviewed two people so far, and we have five interviews to do tomorrow. We also have our seasonal inspector still, and she will be performing inspections in the spring and in the summer. We're not doing too bad on completing inspections. I was able to do 40 for January, and I think that we are, even though we have the loss of the inspector, we're still going to be in a good place. We also have a trade show coming up on the 27th, and I passed out a flyer to everybody up here. It'd be nice to see everybody there. If anybody has any questions for me?
You all have a pretty good enforcement officer in Onto a Township, I hear, that reports to you all all the time.
Yes.
Yeah, and you all are doing a pretty good job for Onto a Township. They appreciate that.
Well, we appreciate them.
All right, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Try to get you before you sit down. Mr. Rudell, you have anything for the board?
Nothing of huge consequence. I know Jen Renfro, I've been copying her on emails that I've been dealing with, with the state and the governor in terms of our Medicaid funding, and I know that's becoming an issue, so I just want to make sure that you're all in tune with that, and I have been doing everything and not being quiet to make sure that they fund us properly for our, for our services. Any questions?
Right. John is the Woodlands Executive Director, right?
CFO.
CFOs, CEOs, COOs.
I'm kind of like Jen right now. It's double duty, triple duty, parking lot duty, all kinds of duty.
Don't mess with the parking lot.
There you go.
Leave the parking lot guy alone. He means well.
Parking lot, just ignore us.
Well, it's me he's talking about. I parked my boat in the parking lot one time, and I got ripped up.
But Commissioner Lee's going to be joining in your stead, so we're excited to have him, so.
Yeah, and that's a good move because he's on the other boards.
Swimber board.
Swimber board, and that's a good fit. Yeah. Any questions for, for him? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Elected officials, Judge Beeler, you have anything for the board?
I just wanted to alert you that we're having an all-court and clerk file room training day on Thursday, February 20th, and so it's an all-day training for our staff. We started that last year. It allows us to provide really good training for all of our staff here on location, and so we are closed, our court operations are closed that day except for emergencies. So, there'll be signage up on our building, but that's a cost-effective way for us to train everyone in our building instead of paying for travel to send people elsewhere. So, we found it very effective last year, and we plan to do it every year, but I just wanted to give you a heads up in case you see the signage go up because that'll be closed all day on the 20th. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sheriff?
Just a couple of quick things. We're doing really well with our recruiting. We have three people currently in the academy, three in field training right now, so our numbers are coming back, and we have three or four more scheduled to start in May, which if everything works out right, the numbers should add up. We will be fully staffed by December. So, haven't said that in a long time, so we're excited to do that.
You're going to need two extra people to replace that guy.
Well, I asked him to come here tonight, not for you, over thunder, but hey, come on. So, tonight, this sale is official, which you guys just approved. We're going to sell Nira to Dave, and I have the paperwork for him here, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody got to see Nira, and we're going to miss her more than we're going to miss Dave. Yeah, so, just wanted to make it official tonight. We'll go out and holler and take care of that so someone else can come up, but congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Maybe I should have talked to you first, Clint, before I did what I did. Next time. All right. Prosecutor, we got a law enforcement theme going on here.
Let's see, are we on? Yep. Okay, I'm not sure if, I know that Jennifer was very gracious in trying to get a video here to play this evening about something very positive that happened. Our canine advocate, Belle, NPR out of the blue contacted us a few weeks ago saying they wanted to do a story on her, and they really did a wonderful little piece on her. We were hoping to play it tonight, but I think we might be having some issues with the sound. Are we still in that status? No. So, no problem. We really appreciate Jody and Jennifer.
We can get it next time.
Yeah, sounds good. And we'll plan to play that, and I think Amanda and Mary will be able to be here at that meeting, too, so that'd be nice so that they can get some recognition on that. Just two other things I wanted to mention again, just to echo what the sheriff said about Dave Nevins. Dave was just a phenomenal officer. Hate to see him go, and again, as well as his canine as well, they just did a super job for the county. But I do appreciate the fact that the sheriff, as did his predecessor, Sheriff Benke, have been working very hard to get their, their office back up to staff, and we, my office, we're very fortunate. 33% of the prosecutor's offices in the state of Michigan still are short-staffed. They don't have enough assistant prosecutors. For about the last year now, we've been full-staffed, which is phenomenal. We've got, when I first came here, the prosecutors, the assistants, we had less than five years of experience in the office. Right now, with my assistants, we've got around 80 years of experience, and with my addition, that's over 120 years of experience. And I proudly say, I think we have one of the best assistant prosecutor's, or excuse me, prosecutor's offices in the state of Michigan for an office our size. We've just got a great staff, and they're showing great leadership. That included two jury trials this month, guilty verdicts on both of them, including one defendant with a number of gun cases, gun charges against him. He had, on a previous case, punched his attorney before the trial started, and so he, on this case, decided halfway through the trial, or right in the beginning of the trial, actually decided to try it alone on his own. He did that. It didn't work out well. He was found guilty in about 11 minutes, so appreciate my staff's hard work in that regard. Finally, I just mentioned, as with my staff, again, we, working with the sheriff, and again, appreciate his willingness to do this. We've, the last two Wednesdays, my staff worked well into the evening till about 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock, working with training with the new officers. They're an enthusiastic group, and we want to make sure that they do a phenomenal job in their efforts here to keep the county safe, so glad to do that. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your office's hard work and being up to staff and doing what you do.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks. Treasury Anderson.
At this time of the year, I usually like to provide an update on where we stand with the tax collection process. We recently sent out 2,000 notices to homeowners who have been delinquent on their property taxes for a year. If their taxes remain unpaid as of March 1st, they will roll into forfeiture status. They'll incur additional fees and interest. So, that's usually the time of the year where you're going to see long lines in the county treasurer's office outside, people trying to pay that, their property taxes before it rolls into the forfeiture status. I have also begun personal visits to homeowners at high risk of foreclosure due to 25 months of delinquencies. Currently, there's 207 parcels in our county that are in that status. We, throughout this forfeiture and foreclosure process, the treasurer's office works diligently to notify homeowners and provide them with every possible opportunity to explore solutions and avoid foreclosure. Most of them will avoid foreclosure, but that's going to be a lot of work between now and March 31st to get that number from 207 down to maybe a quarter of that. We're also processing hundreds of dog licenses. State law requires that all dogs that are four months old and older be licensed, so you must purchase your dog license before you must purchase your dog license before February 28th to avoid additional fees. And I know there's some of you that are in that status.
Oh.
My office is also busy processing border reviews adjustments, state of Michigan principal residence denials, and principal residence assessor adjustments. Adjustments can go back three years, and they require refunds, new bills, chargebacks, all depending on the type of adjustment it is. On average, we process about 200 adjustments a year, unless the state of Michigan is auditing us, and then that number goes up to about 600 a year. But right now, on average, it's about 200. And as you can see, January through April are the busiest times of the year for the treasurer's office. So that's where we're at now. Any questions?
Any questions for our treasurer?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Just a couple of updates. It is that time after a large election where my office prepares a new county directory. Everyone gets very excited to see their name in print. So we need your updated information, new commissioners. If anyone's information has changed, please contact my office with that so we can have it correct. Moving to elections, we are auditing the November 2024 election next Thursday, right here in this room at 9:00 a.m. We do this after every single election, but we have a higher percentage of precincts we are auditing this time around. So I have a team of about 10 election inspectors that are gonna assist me by law. I am, I used to be able to conduct them. I am not allowed as county clerk anymore. So we go through all of the paperwork, and we go through every single ballot and count them by hand to compare them to the tabulator results, to make sure our tabulators are accurate. That is open to the public. Anybody's willing to attend. I will also bring results to the next board meeting to let you guys know how the audit goes. We will have a May special election in some parts of Cass County. The medical care facility was going to hold a countywide. They are choosing to wait a little bit, so we're working with them on that. However, if you are a voter in Cassopolis Public School District, White Pigeon School District, or you reside in Jefferson Township or Porter Township, you will have a special election. So I believe that is May 6th, so watch for more information on that. And last but not least, we do have a few new local clerks. And with that, I am excited that I have put together a training for all local clerks. Tyler Oats from MSU Extension specializes on governmental procedures, Robert's Rules, Open Meetings Act. So he's coming in, and I've asked him to craft it specifically for clerks. And we invited city, township, village clerks, and also pairing with the St. Joe County clerk, we invited our neighboring clerks. I'm gonna talk about minute-taking, because I've done it for just a few years. And we're gonna talk about proper procedures and all that fun stuff. So we will be in here next week for that. Thank you.
You've taken a minute or two. Couple hours, baby, all of you. All right. Drain Commissioner, is he here? All the water's froze. Come on, man. All right. New business. M-26, 2025, motion approved new contract with ATC Medical for medical services in the jail, and the sheriff is on his way up.
Make that motion?
Second.
All right. Motion on the floor in support. You're up for discussion.
So our current healthcare provider in the jail, the contract is gonna end February 28th. We've been kind of frustrated with them over the last couple of years. So I had been in talks with this company. They do a majority of the prison systems in Michigan, and now they're branching out into county jails, which they're in about five right now. And really good reports from the county jails of the quality of work they do, plus it's gonna save the county about $60,000 and keep the same medical treatment that we're given right now. So I think it's a win-win.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
All right. Any other discussion? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, or you're going to jail. Number two, M-27, 2025, motion approved elevator repair at Cass County Law and Courts Building.
Mr. Chair, yeah. I'll support that motion.
Motion on the floor in support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number three that I added, for the public, general knowledge that we had our first meeting for the ad hoc committee that I formed to, in the search of an administrator, and it consisted of five members. We had one member drop out, and it was brought to my attention that we have two more that we could use one or the other in that place. So we have commissioner representation, we have elected official representation, we have admin representation, and HR representation. So two names were brought to me, Tammy Stewart from Equalization, because she's a tenured person in the county, or Jody Nestich, who is the most tenured person, I think, in the county next to Judge Beeler and maybe Clint. So it's my decision, but I would like to bring that to the board, that we can pick one of those two and make it a group decision instead of just me.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we nominate Jody Nestich.
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 All right. Any other nomination for the other? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Jody. Thank you for your support and your service to our county. All right. Public comment. This public comment is also limited to three minutes per person, and it is for anything that is not on the agenda, but I would caution you, keep it polite. You know, and I will open the floor now for public comment. Jerry, would you like to come up?
I have a question.
All right. I was hoping you would, so I can get you at your meeting. Anybody else? The floor is now closed for public comment. We have no closed session. Anything for the board commissioner Lee? Commissioner Marquetti?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Langley?
Yes.
Yes, sir, please.
I just want to say thank you to everybody. Being on the board of commissioners is really a humbling experience. I'm having a lot of fun doing this, and I just appreciate being here.
All right. Commissioner Lawrence?
Nothing at this time.
Commissioner Barrera?
Nothing at this time.
Commissioner Northrup?
No.
Commissioner Grace?
No.
All right. If not, we are adjourned. Thank you.